Call the regular meeting, August 1st, 2013 of the Board of Education to order. Ms. Sims, would you call the roll?
Yes. Dr. Daniels.
Here.
Mrs. Felter.
Here.
Mr. McHune.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Pollan.
Here.
Mr. Shear.
Here.
Mrs. Martin.
Here.
Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our agenda tonight with item 2.01, a presentation on all the summer events that happened. Dr. Banikowski, are you going to lead the way here?
I certainly am. A great opportunity to talk with you a little bit about what happened during the summer. And I'm not going to give you the thorough picture because we would be here all evening talking about the summer. But so often, people, when they think about summer and they think about education, they think about, oh, the best part of being in education is June, July, and August. Well, I think you will hear, just from hearing about four activities that occurred during the summer, you will hear that, oh, my gosh, summer is a very busy time in the Olathe Public Schools. The very first thing that we're going to hear a little bit about is the Summer Conference, the Olathe Summer Conference. Dr. Jan Heinen, who has done an excellent job of facilitating for quite a number of years, the Olathe Summer Conference and their professional learning opportunities. So she's going to give us just a little glimmer into the Summer Conference.
Dr. Heinen.
Thank you. It's wonderful to have a chance to share some information with you tonight. Summer begins with our Summer Conference each year. Three days, the week after school is out. So after Memorial Day weekend, we have our three days of Summer Conference. This year was our 22nd annual conference. So it's become a longstanding tradition for us. We had over 1,500 people attend this year. And staff members across our districts, teachers, counselors, nurses, principals, social workers, we try to provide staff development options that will appeal to all of our staff. We offered 171 sessions this year across the three days, reaching many parts of our curriculum, and certainly from early childhood through high school education, and then some of the various topics that you see listed there. We bring national and regional leaders in education to our conference to present. Thirty-seven of them came this year. And this design for professional development allows our staff members to hear information that they could have heard at national conferences, but by the very same presenters that we bring here to our conference. We also had 70 Olathe presenters this year from our own staff, and that's also a very important part and a highlight of the conference. Our staff have a chance to choose the sessions they go to, and those things are most aligned with their professional needs and their work with the children in our districts. The last day of the conference, on Friday, in the afternoon, our school teams have a chance to meet together and share and analyze and process the information they've learned and to see how they might apply it to their own school plans for the coming year. This all happens because of so many people who contribute to the conference. And so you see some pictures there of some of our learning sessions and process. But certainly thanks to the TNL staff who work all year to see as they're working on their plans during the school year, we want to make sure everything that happens at the Summer Conference is aligned with our curriculum, aligned with our programs. And those TNL staff members and others help us do that. The Olathe Northwest staff, they've been hosting us since they opened, and it's a wonderful, wonderful site to be in in early summer, and we thank them. Food service, Service Center, technology, graphic communications, all of those people worked very hard to help pull this three-day project together. And literally among many of those people, we're working on it year-round, little bits and things we need to do. And certainly, again, those 70 district staff who presented sessions. Also, a special thanks to an important partner, Mid-American Dancery University. These 22 years, they've been with us the entire time, offering graduate credit to folks who want to. Nearly 700 participants did that this year. And it's wonderful to have their endorsement of our program by allowing graduate credit. And it's not just district staff who attend the conference. We have staff members and folks from outside the district attend. We welcome them. It certainly enriches our discussions and our events at the conference. And also their participation helps to pay the cost of bringing the presenters here. So a wonderful, wonderful process that involves lots of people, and we think brings us a great staff development value.
And certainly, we thank Dr. Heinen for all her leadership in helping to make this happen. It's come a long way in the last 22 years, so we appreciate that. Well, you know, kids were also busy during the summer. And we had many students that were involved, whether it was summer camps or athletics or activities. But a lot of students were involved in the Olathe Summer School. And it's been a long tradition of opportunity for students to get enriched or to remediate some of their skills. Deb Chapel has been a wonderful partner with us in really helping facilitate the summer school project. It's a very big undertaking, and Deb's going to talk to us just a little bit about our summer school.
Thank you. SALE is, as you're aware, our elementary program for students in grades K through 4. And we're very pleased about the high-quality offerings and coursework that's available during that time. And you can see listed on this slide a variety of courses that are available to students. And we had 1,421 students participate in this program this year, so we felt very good about that. That's a nice participation rate for us. And then at the middle school level, we have Summer Trails Program for grades 5 through 8. We had 317 students participate in that program, and again, a wide variety of coursework available for students, including some 21st Century Camps, so opportunity to kind of help students become familiar with those as they're moving towards high school, so they're aware of those programs and aware of what kinds of things those programs do. As well as Lego Robotics is very, very popular. So we've really focused on expanding and trying to provide some exciting coursework for middle school students. Whoops, that was my mistake. Some other opportunities available in the summer are E-Academy. And we had 168 students participate and get high school credits through E-Academy this summer. We also participated again in the State Breakfast and Lunch Program. So all of the students K-8 that came to a summer program received free breakfast and lunch onsite as part of their school day. In order to qualify for that program, 50% or more of the students enrolled in the program must qualify for free or reduced lunch, and we met that criteria at each of our sites. So we were able to provide that service for all of our students. We also had driver's education. We had driver's education routinely fills and maxes out, and we had 420 students go through driver's education this year, as well as Summer Waits, which continues to grow and grow and be very popular with 945 students.
Thanks, Deb. Just a lot of work to help us have a great opportunity for many, many students. And I always say, it's always great to have these students in participating in some learning activity rather than on the street or bugging their parents. Another opportunity we have is, we could not exist without the summer project work that goes on in this district. We have everything from folks working, have a group of teachers that are working on an international language assessment for their end-to-course assessments. We have people that are working on iPad lessons and getting kind of a jump start so we can start the year right off. We have everything from JCC articulation agreements that are being written. Our elementary science kits are being refreshed during the summer. We have 21st century tasks that are being completed. So whether it's 1, 2, 10, 15 teachers that come together under the leadership of a facilitator that helped to get some summer project work. We're going to hear about one of those projects, and that's from our Social Studies area. Our Social Studies Coordinator, Maureen Donigan, is going to talk to us a little bit about that, and she is right here. And I want to also mention, Maureen is one of the leaders, not only in our district for Social Studies, but also in the state of Kansas. She has been picked on, oh, I don't know if picked on. Yeah, maybe she's been picked on to give some leadership at the state level. Maureen, tell us a little bit about this project.
Well, in addition to opportunities for our teachers to learn more and for our students to learn more during the summer, one of the things we like to take opportunity for in the summer is a chance to kind of get ahead on some of the work that we need to get done during the school year. Summer provides an opportunity to work with teachers when they're a little bit more relaxed, have a little more time, a little less jumbling around in their brains that they have during the school year and working with their students. So we took this opportunity this summer to get a jump start on our elementary social studies revision. As Dr. Banikowski mentioned, I've worked for the last couple of years on revising the state's social studies standards. And when we do that as part of the board process for curriculum revision, once those sorts of things have fallen into place, it's time for us as a district to take a look at our curriculum and look ahead. So in June, we had a group of over 39 teachers and instructional resource teachers who got together, and we had a wonderful brainstorming session as we thought ahead to kind of make some plans so that when we have those valuable days with subs during the school year to work on curriculum revision, we would have a jump start on what we were going to do. Before they even came to the meeting, they had previewed some videos talking about best practices, read some articles about things like essential questions, looked at the new state's social studies standards and things like that. So when they got there for that meeting that afternoon, they were pumped and ready to go and ready with a lot of good ideas for what we were going to do. So we reviewed the things that we've already been doing. We took a look at some answers to some surveys that teachers had completed earlier in the school year, and we're starting to put all those things together. We've got the framework in place so that when we get ready to go again here in the fall, we are ready to move forward with some input and don't have to backtrack and take time to do that. And one of the things that I kind of wanted to point out of the value of summer project work, you know, we work on curriculum and revision and materials constantly. It's an ongoing project. And often, we have to do it, you know, during the school year when we're busy with other things. So we've been working on this for a long time with social studies. We've been learning about best practices. Our two Teaching American History grant projects have allowed us to stay up with those sorts of things. As the state standards have been revised, we've been looking at that. Teachers have had input into that process. They know what's going on already. They're ready for that. But when we can have time in the summer to pull everybody together and have a big group, because I could never pull a group of 40-plus people together during the school year. We can't do that with our sublimitations. I can pull everybody who has a big interest in it into the group and make them all feel like they're part of the input process. That's the value of summer project work. So that was really valuable for us. And we'll take what that input that they've given us and have that opportunity to feel really comfortable and ready to go as we move forward with that curriculum revision over the next coming school year. So you'll be seeing me again this year as we come forward with our curriculum revisions.
Great. That was a great, great opportunity and great facilitation by Maureen Donigan. Well, the last area we're just going to highlight is certainly we know that we offer to our students Advanced Placement or AP classes. If any of you have had an opportunity to have a student go through that, a child go through that, you know that an AP class is very rigorous. In fact, I had the opportunity to have breakfast with students this morning, and one of the senior girls is taking five AP classes. I was thinking I should pray for her because it sounded like a very hefty schedule for her. But you can imagine the teachers, when we're implementing that curriculum, need to have professional development. Well, we've had our Advanced Placement, Summer Institute. And Louann Hermick, who has really done some great facilitation, brought some great trainers, is going to talk to us a little bit about that opportunity that's provided for our teachers as well as others. Louann.
Thank you. Actually, it was just one week ago today that we wrapped up our AP Institute. So everything is fresh on our mind. We were at Olathe Northwest. Here you see some shots from some of our participants, as well as our consultants, working in our AP Summer Training. Just as an awareness, as Dr. B. mentioned, we have 17 AP courses in our high school curriculum in a variety of content areas. And she mentioned, too, that these are noted as some of the most rigorous coursework opportunities students can have throughout the United States. So we are quite proud, if you will, of the sustained initiative. We have a seven-year partnership with Washburn University, providing the college credit for the AP Institute. We are the, Olathe is the only college board certified summer institute in the state of Kansas. That means that we must follow some pretty rigorous guidelines. You see laid out there, it's a very strategic training, four days, eight to four. So there are seat time regulations for all of our participants. This summer, we offered 15 courses. We, our consultants must be approved by the college board, must have evidence that they provide good training. We have a common evaluation form, and those are taken very seriously. They come to us from throughout the country. You can see that we had 232 participants this year. Forty-five were our own Olathe staff members. The bottom line is student learning. And so over the next couple of months, I know you're going to hear a little bit more about student learning results, including AP learning results. But it really does fit with the benefits for students, for staff, and of course, the district. And I want to highlight just a few of those. Our goal for every teacher is, learning is continuous regardless of what it is you teach. So it does fit with our professional goals, professional development goals as part of the district. It's a real service for our teachers. It's right in our backyard. And so anytime AP changes are made with curriculum, new tests, required audits, it's very important that those teachers are at this training. Having it here in our backyard keeps our teachers at home with their families during the week, and they just have a short drive. We indeed do not have to pay for airfare and travel, if you will, and hotels to send people to AP institutes throughout the country that might have spaces for teachers. So it truly is a cost savings to the district. It is also revenue generating, so it is very much an initiative that essentially we have money coming in to override any costs that may be a part of what it would cost to, of course, host the AP Institute at Olathe Northwest. So we're thrilled about those ideas. As I mentioned, I have a big stack of evaluations on my desk, so I just decided just to pick a couple voices from, one, a teacher I'll read, and then another one from a consultant. This is from Drew Kider from AP Physics at Olathe Northwest. Drew says, "The AP Summer Conference this year was outstanding. The resources, labs, demos, materials, and news is invaluable for an AP teacher. AP is a dynamic beast, and there is no better way to constantly learn and grow as a teacher professionally than to share ideas with fellow teachers." And we love to hear this. For instance, "Over the past week, I found ways to cut my lab budget in half while making my labs even better." And then just a feel for a consultant comment. This is from Gretchen Polnack from the University of Texas. "What a pleasure it is to work with committed teachers in a collaborative and academic setting. The Olathe Institute is without a doubt one of my favorite APSIs to facilitate because of the administration's support and commitment to teachers and students." I think Gretchen's comment really also supports what Jan talked about. It truly is a team effort. It's about the people, the administrators, the assistant administrator overseeing the facilities. We had a lot of communication with Greg Smith from Olathe Northwest, and I know Dr. Heinen does. Anytime you are dealing with a custodial staff, we had many comments. It was so wonderful to work with folks. We had many comments from the people outside of our district in different states about the cleanliness of the building and the beautiful condition it was in. So it's always nice to hear that. As Jan also mentioned, it's a delight to work with Cathay 233. From ordering the food to having them serve it every day, there were comments about the delicious food. We serve lunch every day. It truly is a team initiative, so it goes without saying it's a part of our culture in Olathe. So that just gives you a quick glimpse at some of the learning that went on and the support, teachers, students, a little bit of the perspective. Any questions? It was a great summer.
Moving on then to item 2.02, Synergistic Energy Reduction Program Presentation by Mr. John Hetcheson.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to provide you some information this evening about a unique opportunity for us to re-energize our energy conservation program. Joining us this evening in the audience is Bob Davis. He's Regional President for Synergistic, and he's going to join me at the end of the presentation and help with any questions you might have. Many of you know that we've had an energy conservation program here in the district since 1992. We had, that program began through a five-year contract with a group called Energy Education, Inc., who today is known as Synergistic. So we have had a long relationship with this group. Since its inception, the program has saved over $25.7 million in energy costs. Synergistic's now has grown. We were one of the first districts that utilized their services. Now they're in 1,200 organizations and in over 20,000 buildings across the nation. Through all of that extensive work at so many locations, they've really developed some proven strategies to conserve energy at not risking a comfortable environment in the building. This isn't a program about just every year, let's click down the degrees one more until we get to zero and we don't have any heating or cooling in our buildings. It's much more in-depth than that. In Kansas alone, they have 18 clients that they're currently working with. You'll see on the list a couple, quite a few of them Wichita Public Schools, Kansas City Kansas Public Schools is currently working with them as well. So we would not be alone if we were to re-contract with them. So if we have been saving $25 million, what's the need to re-contract with Synergistic? While we continue to save in the program, really, our savings has shifted to gaining savings through capital improvements. We do a lighting retrofit in a school to lower more conservative bulbs and ballasts, and we save money that way. Where we have not been making inroads in recent years is on that human behavior side. One of the key components of this program is the energy specialist. It used to be called the energy manager. Many of you know Bob Courtney. He was our initial energy manager when we started in 1992, and until his, served in that role until his retirement a couple years ago. We actually, Dr. Barry and I, met with Bob recently just to get his impressions of the concept of re-contracting with Synergistic. And he was pretty excited, and I thought he had a great analogy for it. He said that energy conservation is sort of like pushing a wheelbarrow up a hill. You need a constant forward force to get that wheelbarrow up the hill, otherwise you're going to move backwards. And when he left the district, we lost that forward force that kept the program going. The way the program really works is, their formula for success is this energy specialist that works with a very robust team of professionals through Synergistic. Expertise is anywhere from HVAC to irrigation to all over the gamut. And they, together, they work in kind of four main areas. They work with some proprietary technology that they've developed. I don't even know what this statement means. Perhaps Mr. Pollan would know, but it's some patented algorithmic equations that really get at the heart of your systems and figure out where's the best bang for the buck in conserving energy and be more efficient in your operations of your equipment. We utilize an energy cap accounting system. It's a very intricate software that tracks and adjusts to measure exactly what is the savings that you're getting through the program. And it tracks savings implemented by Synergistic, and it tracks savings implemented by us. What that means is, if we do a lighting retrofit, Synergistic does not get credit for that. And the software basically adjusts those factors out. It's all against a baseline from when you start in the contract. So we get full credit for making that move. We create all of that savings. If they make a recommendation on how to handle something in our system, software tracks that, and it kind of keeps track of who is responsible for that savings and who gets to share in the benefit of that. The other area is in, kind of in that behavioral science. That's the more long-term piece. What does that exactly mean? Well, the energy specialist is in our buildings a lot. And in our scenario, we're looking at two energy specialists being provided by Synergistic. It could be as simple as, right after the end of school, they're in a classroom, they notice the computer's left on, the light's on, just a nice polite note, encouraging the teacher to maybe shut that off on their way out. And it helps in this great energy program the district has. Or a complimentary note in the computer lab when all that's shut down at 3:30 and they happen to be walking through. So it's a longer-term behavioral change that goes on. The optimization of our current infrastructure is probably where you get your biggest bang in the initial years and has some of the more sizable savings that come through that. And that's where they look at how we utilize our existing systems. We don't have to go buy additional new heating and cooling systems or new control systems. They work with whatever we have, and they make recommendations to utilize it better. Some of it could just be process issues. An example of a process, we do a two-week winter break. Let's assume that we have four freezers over at food production, and they're all a quarter of the way full. Do we just run those freezers during the two-week break? Or is it worth our effort to consolidate everything into one and shut all, three of them down for two weeks? That could be just sort of a system change that they suggest that's outside of a mechanical system. Together, working in those areas is what makes the program very successful. From a financial standpoint, what is attractive is the guarantee. If we don't save money, they don't get paid. It is not that we're hiring a consultant to guide us through this. It's, the software is designed to come up with a baseline of, here's how much your consumption is. And if you can avoid spending more and lower that consumption, adjusting for rates and degree days and all these variables that are out in the elements, they share in that savings. And that's, if they do not do that, and actually it goes up, they have to write us a check. So there is no outlay of cash upfront. I like how the software is not developed by them. It's a third-party vendor. Energy Star program utilizes it, and it's an independent measure because if we can't measure it, we can't see if we are successful or not. And there's also a strategy that they use called a quick start. In a quick start period, it's the first six months, we get all the savings. There is no sharing. They want quick buy-in from staff. They want to get their staff in here, their professionals, looking at, how can we get inroads quickly? Because the quicker we start saving, obviously, they are a business, the quicker they share in those savings. The real potential is one direction. It's, we have the potential to save. We don't have, yes?
Could you back up to the other slide? Mr. Hetcheson, I think, did you talk about the last bullet point there?
That's where I had mentioned, our savings doesn't exceed the investment. Synergistic will refund the difference. So basically, if we do everything that they direct us to, and our consumption goes up, it doesn't, we are not saving in our consumption, they're not going to get their share. The investment is really their payment, their sharing of our savings. So if it goes up, they actually write us a check to get us back down to our baseline. If they don't reach the projections, we just share in a smaller piece. If we're projected to save $400,000 and we only get to two, we'd share in the two. But at no time are we required to pay anything into the system until those savings create the payment to them.
So Tina, six, we'll finish then. Start a question.
Excuse me. So the real potential is on the upside for, to free up operating budget. That's the key. And some of these are a little repetitive. Some of the strategies is this quick start in the six-month period to try and generate some of those savings quickly. All of the program investment or the sharing of the savings with Synergistic comes from the savings. So we don't have any cash that, there's not stipulating in a schedule that you're going to owe us $200,000 regardless. The biggest piece that makes them very unique compared to a lot of other conservation companies is there's no capital investment required. Generally, companies have structured, we have a financing package for you here. We're going to go do an audit of your schools. We're going to ask you to replace all of this equipment, and we'll have the financing for you, and those savings will pay all that financing and get you your new equipment. We can continue on our capital financing and get you your new equipment. We can continue on our capital improvement plan, make those improvements, keep all that savings. This will be above and beyond that. It's budget neutral. We're already budgeting $5.6 million for utilities. If that, we don't have to add more on to do this program. It will, if that reduces, we start sharing in that. One might think that, could we locally or regionally find other construction, other vendors that could help us with this, mechanical vendors and the like? The real unique thing here is kind of the depth and breadth of their consulting staff. At the energy specialist's fingertips, he has an irrigation person to, if he's got questions about us watering our fields, he's got the HVAC group, he's got all of these various experts. That's hard to find all in one company locally or even regionally. They've set it up to help with their 1,200 clients. To summarize the contract, it's, as I had mentioned earlier, our original contract way back was five years. It really hasn't changed in structure. This would be a five-year contract. It's really five years and six months. There's that quick start, six months. They're gearing up the hiring of an energy specialist. They've got their team looking at the, kind of the quicker strategies we can get after to start saving. We start to implement those. We keep that, 100% of that savings for that six-month period. Then we get into the five-year period. And that's where we share in everything 50/50. After we quantify how much has been saved each year, they receive 50% of that savings. Outside of the realm is any capital improvement we've made. If we do a lighting retrofit, we program it into the software. It knows based on all of the specs of that equipment, this is the kilowatts you're going to save, this is how much, and based on the rates, here's how much you're saving. You keep that. You don't have to share that savings with them. It's only their recommendations. They also, in their process, will recommend capital improvements. They still don't share, but they, they will encourage us to still make so, run our capital improvements by them just to see if they see the same benefits that we do there. Over a 10-year period, that's about $10 million. If you look at the initial five years, because we're sharing, we say, it's net to us after they've had their share about $3.7 million of savings is the projection. That first 18-month period is about $750,000, direct savings to us. What we're really talking about in the program is changing the trajectory. Utility rates will always go up. We just want them multiplied by a smaller and smaller number. Maybe not decreasing, but we don't want it to grow at the rate it currently is growing. So, we want these initiatives in place to pull the line down on the chart, create that gray area to free up dollars and avoid costs. Otherwise, every year I have to increase the utility budget, and that takes away from classroom spending. So, if we can pull that trajectory down, it's a great benefit to the district and to classrooms. With that, I'm going to invite Bob up, and I'm sure you have questions.
As Bob's coming up, let me share one more comment, so it's not just the budget grinch that's presenting this in terms of dollars that we can save.
[laughter]
It is rare in our school district budgets today that we can find a program that doesn't impact personnel. As you know, most school district budgets in Kansas and across the country are heavy with personnel in terms of 80% of our costs. So, this is an opportunity for us to save some money in our budget without impacting or reducing staff or reducing programs for students. So, it's, again, kind of a no-risk opportunity that we can look for a place inside our budget to find a few more dollars.
So, I've got a question. So, overall, in this 10-year period, you're saying that you would save us, what was it, somewhere around?
$10 million.
$10 million.
That's correct.
And nothing against your company, but I don't think, but it cost us $10 million to hire somebody on our own payroll to be able to do that? Or can you talk to why we wouldn't look at something like that ourselves? Because I don't think, I think the cost savings there would be even higher rather than splitting this 50/50.
I think I can give that a try, and then I'll let Bob jump in.
Okay.
It's that, it's that pool of experts. We're going to hire an energy manager who can work on some of the behavior things, but who's really going to look at our systems, our processes, have experience at 20,000 other buildings, and say, this is what you need to do to make some inroads in your consumption? That, to have the expertise all in one person is going to be pretty, is fairly difficult.
Thanks, John. The real key, again, is the depth and breadth of the company. Whenever you become a partner with Synergistic, we have over 50 energy conservation engineers and experts on staff. Almost half of our company is on the engineering side. And you have access to all those people. They're not geographically located. They are specific energy conservation need-located. So, as the opportunities arise in various areas, those are the engineers that would be in the district working. So, you'd have two energy specialists inside the district, which we would pay for out of our portion of that 50% savings. In fact, we pay for everything with the exception of the cost of the third-party software, because we like to keep that very, very separate. But that's a minimal cost. It's roughly $10,000 a year to the district. And then you have all of that expertise. That's over 400 years' experience, over 400 energy conservation degrees and certifications.
How many of those people will be in the district in the first six months?
That's an excellent question. It depends on what's taking place in the district, but I would guess that you would see somewhere between 10 and 12 folks in your district, depending on what we find immediately. That's the real key to the quick start program. We want to get as many of our folks into your facilities as we can to see what the current status is, so that we can compare the data that we've already gathered from the district versus what we see, and then we can make, start making recommendations immediately in a variety of areas to get you the quickest and the greatest amount of savings during that quick start period.
So, we've already shared data with them? Actually, we have, and it's an excellent point, because just our desire to contract with Synergistic didn't necessarily get us a deal with Synergistic. They had to do some due diligence to make sure they saw the potential. As I said, they are a business, and they need to try to make some money at this, while they save us money. And based on that due diligence, they agree that there's something to be done here.
Can I expand on that? Mr. Pollan, we do not come back into a district at this level unless we are almost 100% certain, as close as we could be, that we can reduce the energy spend in that district by at least 20%. Our national average is 26.2%. And we have a number of districts that are over 30%, 40% districts.
So, you talk about two energy conservation managers that would be assigned to us. So, there would be two individuals that would be just working with our district?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. They'd be full-time here. You would have a program liaison inside the district. Synergistic would hire and pay for these people, but they would have a direct report inside the district itself.
So, at the end of the contract, then, would those people be available to us to hire?
Yes, they would.
To continue on, those individuals?
Yes, and we're still available for you too. We don't ever go away. We prefer to stay with the district as long as the district maintains the energy specialist, continues to gather and enter the data on a regular and consistent basis, and allows those energy specialists to continue to come to national training conferences. We hold three of those a year, where we bring in the top experts in all fields of energy conservation from around the world to provide them with the latest and greatest information. If a district will do that, Synergistic will stay their partner and provide any of our services as needed for as long as you stay in the contract, excuse me, as long as you stay in the program. We have some districts in the United States that are entering their third decade with us.
So, what constitutes staying in the program? Is there an annual fee? What does that look like after the five-year threshold?
There is no annual fee. Again, we're free after the contract. We're there, we're on-call. I'd base it like this. We're sort of like a fireman. We're waiting for the alarm to go off. Anytime that the district needs information, anytime that there is a concern that the energy specialists are finding, we continue to bring those engineers in and continue to supply that knowledge. It seems almost counterintuitive to business, but we don't feel like we're a business-to-business company. We're a business-to-education company. And it doesn't do us much good to come in, put a program in place for you that's linear, and then leave at the end. We want this to be perpetual so that your growth is exponential in the savings.
Okay. What other costs would be associated after the five-year mark, software upgrades? Is there, the ones that have been with you for decades, what sort of costs occurrence would happen after the five-year mark?
That's an excellent question. The Energy Cap Pro software, which all of our partners use, has an annual renewal fee. It's currently about $2,500 a year. They update that software every year. The other additional cost would be to allow your energy specialist to attend at least one of the three annual national training conferences. Cost on that, it usually averages about $1,000 per person. We have three of those. We try to make them regionalized. There's normally one in the upper Midwest, usually somewhere around the Chicago area, because it's easy to fly in and out of O'Hare. Actually, it's not, but it should be easy to fly in and out of O'Hare. We normally have one in Texas, simply because that's where our corporate office is. And then we'll normally move one somewhere in the eastern part of the U.S. or the western part of the U.S. to make it easier for a district to select a location that's closest for their energy specialist to attend.
Okay. And the annual fee is not based on user units or anything like that? It's kind of a flat fee, 2,500?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And then are we under obligation to hire these two individuals, or could we send one of our liaison, for example, to the conference?
You may send anyone that you'd like to, to the conference. In fact, we encourage districts to do that. We have, at these conferences, normally 450 to 550 people. The vast majority of those are going to be energy specialists, but we have CFOs that come to that. We have assistant superintendents of business. We have superintendents. I believe we had 22 superintendents at our last conference who came and said, I'd just like to take a look see at this, at what's going on. So, the district is welcome to send as many people to these conferences as they choose.
How about the obligation to hire the two specialists at the five-year threshold to be considered in the program still? Is that part of the requirement?
At the six-year point, they are, they become the district employees, or the district can change those employees, but they become the district employees, but you're no longer paying us any of the fees.
Okay. What's the training of the districts, the energy specialists that come into the district? What's their background?
That's a very good question. The training for the energy specialist itself, we're really looking for a couple of things, and it's not technical. Communication skills are critical. These people are going to be the primary point of contact intra-district. So, they're going to be communicating from Dr. Barry on down inside of the district. They'll also be communicating with you at the board level, which means the community participation, and they'll filter that down through the principals, the faculty, and the support staff of the district. So, communication skills are key. We want everything to be informative, consistent, and motivational with the program. The second quality that we look for is a sense of curiosity. Your energy specialists do not work an eight-to-five job. Our energy specialists are not there to disrupt the educational day. So, 80% to 85% of their time is spent in off-hours. That would be before schools open, after schools are closed, on weekends, during holidays, et cetera. So, they need to be able initially to work with our engineers who are going to be taking them out and showing them what they're looking at, instructing them, training them, telling them why we're making recommendations, and what those recommendations will do. And the energy specialist will be doing 20 to 25 building audits per week each, because what we want to do is be sure that the data that's being gathered and collected is accurate. And the best way to do that is to have an informed set of eyes and ears on the ground, matching up what's actually happening with what the data is telling us. It allows us to make recommendations and corrections much more rapidly.
So, the enhanced comfort for staff and faculty and employees, that doesn't mean you're going to be roasting us out in the summer and freezing us out in the winter, right?
Actually, it's going to be just the opposite. I believe if you would talk with most of our partners, they would concur that your staff is actually going to feel a more comfortable environment than they do now. So, many people think that when you're dealing with energy conservation, that it's simply about rising temperatures or lowering temperatures, and that's not the case. We're looking at things much more intricate than that. We want to know about the airflow, when and why and how it's used. We want to know about humidity factors that are taking place in spaces at various times of the day and the evening. We're very interested in knowing what the CO2 factor is, because those levels must be maintained at peak. So, because the CO2 levels affect attention span, and that affects learning capability by the students that are in the classroom. So, we touch, I mentioned three there. We have over 1,200 touch points that we look at. Temperature only happens to be one of them.
Other questions or comments?
I've got a lot more. It's time to break, isn't it?
It is. But when you say a lot more, is it a one-minute discussion or a 10-minute discussion? All right, then we'll take our comfort break, and we'll reconvene at 7:00. We'll have to put off questions, though, until after we do our public comments and our hearing.
Okay.
We'll resume our meeting now, and we need to move to item 3.01, our budget public hearing. I'm assuming you have some comments for us one more time about the budget?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
All right.
Just a quick summary, just to emphasize, tonight, we have our public hearing on the budget for public to make any comments, and then later in the agenda, asking the board to adopt the 2013-14 budget. Just in the way of reminder, I know, the overall tax levy for the district is actually going down slightly as a result of this budget. We are currently at 69.618, and we will go to 69.440. So, we've maintained that promise of no tax increases as we head into our new construction plans. With that, I really would just stand for any comments that the public might have regarding the published budget.
This is the time for anyone in the audience who would like to comment publicly on the budget, which has been published now and discussed at multiple meetings. If there's anything you'd like to share, please come forward. I think perhaps you've explained it well enough multiple times.
[laughter]
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. We will move on then to item 4.01, which is public comments. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, we may, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. Prior to the board meeting, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment. This is your opportunity now. So, if there is someone in the audience who would like to address the board, please come forward. Seeing none, then we will move on to our recognitions and awards.
Filling in one last time before Maggie Kolb returns to us, which is next week. We're all pretty excited. Good evening. We have some wonderful recognitions tonight, and I'd like to welcome all of our guests that have joined us for our recognitions. To help with our recognitions of our business partners tonight, let's start with having Heather Schoonover from Community Development and Denise Griffey with Career and Technical Education Coordinator to come forward, help us out here. Also, I'd like to ask Jessica Coulson, Family Also, I'd like to ask Jessica Colson, Family and Consumer Science teacher at Olathe South, and Rebecca Reyes, Business Education Teacher at South, to come forward. We're going to give Rebecca just a little bit extra time. No pressure. You did great. Did awesome. For this recognition time, we would first like to invite Marie Alkasair from Safe Home to the front of the room. This past summer, Jessica Colson, wave again, remind us, Jessica, there she is, had the opportunity to work with Community Outreach and School Education Services for Safe Home, a local nonprofit that provides domestic violence support. Safe Home provides a healing atmosphere where survivors of domestic violence can gain inner strength, build self-esteem, explore options, and establish a life free of violence. Through Safe Home Shelter and Community Services, approximately 6,500 individuals each year receive the support they need to leave healthy and independent lives. We thank Marie and Safe Home for providing this wonderful opportunity for one of our very valued staff members, so thank you. Also, we want to invite Jessica Nelson from the Kansas City Area Development Council to come forward. This past summer, Rebecca, there we go, just a quick wave, there we go, had the opportunity to spend time in the marketing department at the Kansas City Area Development Council. During this experience, Rebecca had the opportunity to network with key senior executives from a variety of Kansas City companies. And during this experience, research was completed on how to enhance the metropolitan market for recruitment, and she spent some time editing a corporate publication. We thank Jessica from the Kansas City Area Development Council for providing, again, another valued staff person this opportunity. Rebecca also had the chance to spend time at Relic. It's a Lenexa business. They had a last-minute something come up tonight, and Jared Eller was not able to join us. But I also understand that was a great experience as well, and we're appreciative to Relic for being part of that. So again, if we can show our appreciation for both Safe Home and the Kansas City Area Development Council for your valuable support of our public schools. Thank you. Our final recognition tonight, we're going to recognize the First Robotics Team from Olathe Northwest, and ask that Darren Wooster, Matthew Petrie, and Becky Metcalf, along with all the members that are here tonight, keep coming, of the Olathe Northwest Robotics Team, come forward. Coming along with them is going to be Olathe Northwest Assistant Principal Greg Smith, also Kathy Musgrave with Career and Technical Education, and Dr. Eric Punzwick, our Executive Director of General Administration for our high schools. The Olathe Northwest First Robotics Team, 1710, attended the First Robotics International Competition in St. Louis, Missouri. The team received the prestigious Chairman's Award at the regional competition in Kansas City, earning them a spot in the extremely competitive world championships. Over 400 teams from across the United States and 16 countries participated in the St. Louis competition. Of all the teams, our First Robotics Team won the safest pit award, a special recognition granted to only two teams at their level of competition. On behalf of the Olathe Public Schools, all of your hard work, we wish you great congratulations, and so appreciative that you're sharing this with us tonight, so thank you. After our picture, we're also going to recognize some family members. Any family members of these wonderful students in the audience, please stand up. Let us recognize you. She's also a staff member, which makes that super thing. Again, thank you and congratulations. That concludes our recognitions tonight.
At this time, I would like Mrs. Martin to come forward. We'd like to honor you. Where would you like to stand? I don't know where to look at you. When preparing a few remarks, and I promise I'll be brief, to honor Amy's service, I began to wonder, what about photography leads one to be a great school board member and a great school board president? I Googled qualities of being a good photographer, because those who know me know that I cut off heads, so I am not a good photographer. And I came across an article written by Eric Johnson that lists many of the qualities I've observed in Amy's year of leadership. I won't say them all, but I picked five that I thought truly represented her leadership. The first one is passion. Amy clearly has a passion for the Olathe School District. Her passion is evident in the time and the energy that she expends every day to support our district in achieving excellence. The second is storyteller. Throughout this past year, Amy attended a variety of meetings in the district and the community to tell our story, to help pass our bond issue. Her support, along with all the support of our board members, really helped to educate our patrons about the need for this bond. The third is care about the subject. Amy clearly cares about our school district. All of our board members do, or they wouldn't volunteer the countless hours to our goal of achieving excellence for the district. Patience is the fourth one. Patience is not a word in my vocabulary, but I've observed Amy's patient leadership this year. She has the patience to make sure every patron receives adequate responses to questions, even if she has to respond multiple times. It's part of her larger vision of helping everyone to understand the quality public education that is present in our district and how lucky they are to experience it. And finally, the fifth is try a little harder. Those of you who know Amy know that she can be relentless. She doesn't stop until all questions are answered, until consensus is achieved. To be successful, you must try a little harder than those around you. Each of the qualities that I've described, no doubt, contributes to Amy's success as a photographer, but they've also made her an effective leader of our school board. Thank you, Amy, for your energy and your efforts. It's much appreciated.
Those were really kind words that Debbie shared. However, I think that we all work really well as a team, and so these guys, Dr. Berry, you guys, you all made my job very easy and very enjoyable, and it was an honor to serve as president, and I thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Pollan, back to item 2.02. I'm giving you 10 minutes, just like you said.
Can I set the timer?
I might set the timer and beep it at you.
Just give me a two-minute warning.
Okay. I'll wait. Okay.
I'll do it.
Quick question. Basically, the savings I see in the first, from the presentation, is that all these savings are going to be from behavioral characteristics. Share with me how we save, you know, $750,000 in the first six months with behavioral. And share what some of those behavioral characteristics are?
Absolutely. The behavioral aspect of this is one of two prongs. Obviously, the initial prong that's going to save you the most money initially is going to be on the engineering expertise side. Behavioral change, as we know, in anything, is a slower and longer process. That's one of the reasons why our contract runs for five years. What we're trying to do on the behavioral side is through showing tangible results and savings of dollars that the district has already earmarked to spend with your utility suppliers, that there are things that can be done that can save the district money. The behavioral side will start with the energy specialist. I mentioned earlier that there will be a tremendous amount of communication that will go on. Again, it's all intended to be very positive and informational with staff. And then that really starts at the very top with Dr. Berry, that everyone that works inside the district understands the commitment of the district to the program and the value of the program to the district and the dollars that are saved. So that's the initial intent. Again, the key to that is going to be driven by the energy specialist with communication at all levels, that it will filter down, and we will, over time, not try to turn everybody into the district into an energy conservation expert, but everybody in the district to have a heightened awareness of energy conservation, that they use not only during their school day, but they also take home with them and apply it in their personal life.
But I didn't understand, what are some of those behavioral aspects that we're going to change?
Awareness of where energy is being used, how it's being used, what the cost of that energy is to the district, methodologies that they can apply in their workplace, whether they be a teacher, support staff, principal, somebody at the administration building, that can help reduce, all along the way, the amount of energy spend that the district is using. What we'd really like to do over a period of time, Mr. Pollan, is change the normal of the district. Everyone came to work today in Olathe, and they walked in their facility, and my guess is that very few of them even thought about the environment that they were in, because that's the norm that they're used to. What we want to do is present positive motivational, as well as educational, applications to where people have a heightened awareness of that energy conservation, which, over time, they will not only learn, but begin to apply.
And once again, what are some of those examples of behaviors we're going to change?
Let's take a teacher's classroom, for example. The energy specialist might leave a note, or might have a brief conversation with a teacher that has consistently left lights on or left computers on in their room. They might have visitations on the operational side in a facility about how there are certain zones in a building that perhaps we don't need during particular applications. They might have discussions with a principal, or with the invitation from a principal to their staff, about what savings have been created inside that particular facility, and how they went about doing that. And that would allow that faculty to be recognized and verbally rewarded for their conscientiousness and performance in that. Again, a cultural change in any application takes time. The bulk of your initial savings are going to come on the engineering expertise side.
But there's no capital investment, so how does that come show through, then?
I'm sorry.
If we're not having any capital investment, doesn't cost us anything. Or does that engineering, you know, once again, give me some examples of where we're going to save some money, based on the expertise that you're bringing into the district?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we've got about 1,200 touchpoints that we've identified. We don't use all 1,200 of them inside any district. We don't use them in a set order. It's when we come in and investigate what's going on inside a district. We won't even use the same touchpoints inside each of your facilities. You, like all school districts, are fluid. You happen to be in a growing district. There are districts around the country that are shrinking districts, but nevertheless, you're fluid. You have some brand-new buildings, you have some older buildings, you have new equipment, you have older equipment. You have classrooms that have state-of-the-art technology, you have others that may not have been upgraded yet. We're going to be taking a look in each of those facilities, at each piece of equipment, whether it's a brand-new, state-of-the-art, or whether it's one that unfortunately is being held together with baling wire and duct tape, and look at what that equipment is required to do inside the facility, and then make recommendations off of those 1,200-plus touchpoints that we've gathered to the district as recommendations. And again, that's what we make, is recommendations. Until we have approval from the district, we don't implement anything. This is your program.
This will be a question a little bit to Dr. Berry, I guess, is, you know, these energy specialists, we're giving them, quote, "authority" to implement these things. What authority are they going to have to go into the classroom and say, "Turn your computer off at night"?
Well, yeah, I think we'd have to give them that authority. We actually have a system where we can shut computers down automatically. We're already doing that. If it kind of sweeps the system, and if they're still on at a certain time. We allow for teachers to be in there after school and in the early evening if they're working, but we automatically shut them off currently.
Mr. Pollan, if I could touch on that as well. One of the things that we're very sensitive to are there are certain places inside a district that, because of the nature of what goes on, particularly sometimes in classrooms, science classrooms, where there's lab equipment. I was just visiting with Superintendent Lane in Kansas City earlier today, and one of their interests was in a couple of band rooms that they have, where they have some very expensive stringed instruments that have to be under a particular climatic atmosphere, if you will, and they're trying to figure out ways to not have to keep a whole building up and running in that regard. We understand that, we're very sensitive to that, and we don't come in and push changes, our modifications, in areas where there's sensitivity. And again, I really want to stress to you, we only make recommendations until we have the approval of the district to implement those recommendations. We don't touch anything.
The, do we already have CO2 and humidity sensors in every classroom?
Not in every, though.
In the return air.
In the return air.
In the return air.
So we really can't monitor classroom by classroom? It'll just be the overall building? Or zone, right, Tom? Per zone?
Okay.
And we'll also look at each of those zones in the building, how they're structured, and how they're operational now. But we'll also take a look at what's going on inside each of those zones during the course of the day. What activities take place there? Are they consistent and on a regular basis? Or are they sporadic? We'll even look at things like, what are the age of the students that are in there? Because there's a lot of difference in the climate that's being created around a group of first graders and a bunch of seniors in high school. Are kids that are sitting for 45 to 50 minutes in a lecture-and-learn type environment versus those that are in more of an active-type environment? All of those things change. The CO2 level, the humidity level, the airflow needs to be adjusted in those cases to make sure that we're optimizing the environment in each of those spaces.
From the information I was given, a million dollars a year saves us 18% of our budget in energy, basically.
Initially, your program, again, as I mentioned earlier, we would not be standing here and talking if we didn't think that you'd be a 20-plus percent program. That's what we deal with. That's pretty much our benchmark. Obviously, you're going to grow as the program becomes more involved. More involved, meaning that more recommendations have been discovered and implemented, and that happens over a time period.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand the chart here that you've given us. It's basically a million dollars a year, effectively, just rounding numbers off and up and down, on the bottom line, 10 years. So am I correct that you're going to save us 18% every year? Or is this 18% the first year, and then we just keep saving that amount for the remaining 10 years?
You will continue to perpetuate your growth, and it will become exponential as time goes along. That is the normal flow of the program. And a lot of that, quite candidly, is how involved the district is from the very beginning and stays throughout the course of the program.
So if I can summarize what we're paying Synergistic for is the savings the first year or two, and then maintaining that savings throughout, assuming we didn't grow any more buildings. And how do we take into account new buildings? How does your program take into account that?
We will, when the program is started, we establish a base year with you. We ask the district, who will put together a team, with a team from Synergistic, and what we're going to ask is what would be as close to a typical 12-month period as you could define for us. In most cases, it's the previous 12 months, but there could be anomalies. There could have been special things that took place in your district over the course of that 12 months. Maybe you had a particularly wet winter. Uh, maybe you had a, a particularly wet winter or you had an extremely hot summer and, and you tell us, "That's not our norm. What our norm is, is this," and we continue to back that up. The baseline is established and that's fed into Energy Cap Pro, which is the third-party software that you would be controlling, not Synergistic. And then that baseline floats. So as you have new buildings that come online, we can actually run analysis for you on, 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 uh, best-case scenarios, worst-case scenarios as far as energy spends. They are just that, they are scenarios. Then we're going to want tangible data from those buildings, but Energy Cap Pro, uh, that information will be added. Uh, Olathe is adding 542,000 square feet, it's in an elementary building, uh, the, the majority of the ceilings are at 10 feet, uh, there's a cafeteria there, there's food service application there, or there isn't. Uh, all of those things get fed in. So while we're reading, uh, that data, we're also talking to the district about what we think that that data is going to mean as far as opportunities for energy conservation and therefore reduction in spend. And we do that both informally and formally. Uh, the energy specialist will be talking with the key personnel, again, uh, that liaison that the district will appoint and anyone else that would be interested in being involved in that on your side. Usually, uh, there are people from finance and people from facilities and operations that would be involved in that group. Uh, but we will also be bringing our engineers in on a regular basis and holding what we call an E-map or an, or, uh, an energy map and an I-map or an irrigation map. Uh, the first couple of years, we try to hold those about every three months. Uh, anyone is welcome to come to those meetings and those are much more formal and structured, uh, where we would go over recommendations that had been made, uh, which ones had been implemented, to what degree they'd been implemented, and what savings had been generated off of those. Everyone comes to agreement with that and then the next group of recommendations would be made and we would continue to flow on that process throughout the course.
The, um, energy specialist, after the first five years, what's been the track record of them staying around on the school, at the schools?
Uh, it, it's very, it's very high, uh, because we work very hard with the district upfront. Uh, even, even though Synergistic would be, uh, employing these people, we hire those people with a tremendous amount of input from the district. It would be a collaborative effort, uh, in the posting, the recruiting and the interviewing. We want to make sure that the district is just as happy with the energy specialists that come onboard as Synergistic is because you're looking at them through a different set of eyes than I am. And because we do that and we work collaboratively, we have a very high rate of selecting the correct people for that position. We find that most energy specialists that come into play into this job absolutely love what they're doing. It's, it's very unique and very different. It's a, it's a special kind of individual that fills this role and it fits their niche. And those rare instances where it doesn't, we normally know very, very quickly. That's one of the reasons why we encourage districts to let Synergistic be the employer of those, uh, because if changes need to be made, we can oftentimes make those as a business quicker than a school district can make those changes. But that's very rare. Our energy specialist turnover is minimal.
And the requirements of an energy specialist, you basically mentioned before, more of a communicator, uh, I mean, you know, to me, if we're having an energy specialist, I want somebody that understands the engineering aspect of it and if he's a good communicator, that's a bonus.
Uh, what I mean by they don't have to come with that experience is because they're going to get a tremendous amount of training and what we would like to do is to be able to train that energy specialist. We want them to be trained as an energy conservation specialist, uh, not an equipment expert. Uh, that's what our engineers, uh, have all of their degrees and certifications in. What will happen is, over time, and this happens fairly quickly, once your energy specialist comes onboard, they will go from a learning mode to an observation mode, uh, to an identification mode. And what I mean by that is initially, our engineers will be doing of the bulk of the finding and the recommending. As, as time passes, and normally this, this transpires over the course of the first eight to 12 months, the energy specialist becomes much more confident in the equipment that they're using and the things that they are seeing. They begin to trust their eyes and matching their eyes up with what the data is telling them. Uh, and then they actually become, uh, people who discover recommendations that they give back to us and they're matching up. We're being told in, in this building, under this EMS system, if that building has an NF system, that this is happening at this particular time. I'm seeing an anomaly in the data taking place at 3:00 in the morning, uh, Monday through Friday. It shouldn't be there. So I was in that building at 3:00 and here's what I actually saw. Uh, initially, those types of observations will be done with the energy specialist side by side with our engineer. Ultimately, the energy specialist will have the capability to go out and say, "Yes, that is what I saw, I trust it and I can bring it back and analyze it with the data."
And then just last question, yes or no? Can you share, uh, data from three of the surrounding districts or districts that you've, uh, cited that you, our clients of yours in Kansas, uh, data from when you, in inception of your program to one, two years later, so that, uh, we can take a look to see how you've analyzed it, how you've saved them money?
If those districts are willing to share their data, uh, yes, but that's, that's their data. Uh, it's, I, I don't, I don't have the right to authorize that, just if somebody asked me if you were our partner.
You can provide us names of contacts at those places.
Uh, yes, I believe you have in your packet, uh, the names of every district.
Not being the contact at the district.
And the, and the, and the returns that, that they've received. I can assure you that, uh, that John and Dr. Barry have done just about a year's worth of vetting on this program and have talked to virtually every district, uh, in the area.
Is that correct?
Over the course of the year, we, we have not had a formal, uh, at, at conferences of checking out how the performance is going, but as far as the data behind it, we could get contact information.
That's 10 minutes by my clock.
Almost 20, by my.
Oh, sorry.
I had one question from Josh Hudson. The gentleman mentioned that you'd been work, you and Dr. Barry have been working on this for over a year?
Not diligently working on, on it over a year, considering whether or not there's a benefit to doing this.
So you've been looking, you've been investigating and reviewing for, for the past, alright. So this, uh, this came to the board, uh, pretty quickly and it was rather surprising that we saw it, uh, but I understand all the work that goes into things like we approve, if we approve a budget tonight, we've been working on that budget for 13 months, so, alright.
We had a real interest as, as we worked on this, but we also knew that there was an appropriate time, that once we got through bond issue and budget and those kinds of things, that early in the school year would be the time that we'd like to bring it to you.
I appreciate all of the board members who posed questions, um, earlier this week that Dr. Barry responded to, and I appreciate the questions, uh, this evening. And, um, I'm looking to know right now whether this is something you all feel comfortable voting on this evening or if we should table it for a month.
I would not feel comfortable voting on tonight.
I'm asking all the board members.
Yeah, I do.
Comfortable with it tonight?
Correct. Alright, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We are ready to move on to our action consent agenda. Um, those items should be listed pretty quickly up here on the board for you all to see, 6.01 through 6.06. If there are no comments or questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 6.01 to 6.06 as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Felter to approve the action consent agenda. Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
We'll move on now to item 7.01, approval of the Synergistic Energy Reduction Program. We've had a lot of discussion this evening. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
I move to authorize John Hutchinson, Chief Financial and Operations Officer, to enter into a five-year Energy Conservation Services contract with Synergistic Energy Conservation Company with an effective date of August 1st, 2013.
Second.
Was that Mr. McCune?
Okay.
Sorry. I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. McCune for approval of the Synergistic Energy Reduction Program. Ms. Felter? Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
No.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 7.02, approval of wireless controllers. Comments, questions, motions?
I moved, I'd move to approve the bid for wireless controllers as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Ms. Martin for approval of the wireless controllers. Ms. Felter? Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Item dot, 7.03 is approval of Apple computers. This is to approve bids for Apple Mac, iMac computers and MacBook Pro laptops.
I would move to approve, um, 7.03 to approve the bid from Apple iMac computers and MacBook Pro laptops in the amount of $108,200.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Ms. Martin for approval of the Apple computers. Ms. Felter? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Item 7.04 is approval of the architectural engineering proposals for elementary school renovations. Um, I'm wondering if there are any comments from Dr. Barry or members of our construction committee before we entertain a motion?
I would like to ask Mr. Thomason to, uh, sort of share with us the, the, basically the, the proposal here is for both requests. I'd like him to share what both requests are and, uh, share with him the strengths of why, uh, we think Hollison Miller is the correct architect for this.
For these projects, we issued two RFPs. One RFP was for 16 elementary schools. These are the newer elementary schools that were built from prototypes and will have similar or the same, uh, design solutions. We had another RFP for four projects, which were Northview, Westview, Fairview and Central, which are older, more difficult, more complex, will take more time. My concern was that all of the architects that we submitted the RFPs to would not have staff to work on both of those RFPs. So it gave us the flexibility of splitting this between two firms if, if one of the firms did not have enough staff. Hollison Miller is one of the firms that we, uh, submitted the RFPs to that we felt confident has staff to do all, all of them and more. So that's why we, uh, consolidated them in with one architect for both RFPs.
And once again, share what the difficulty is with the four that you separated?
Well, they're just older schools. This is more than just putting an administrative area at the front seat, uh, front of the building. That is a part of what's happening at Northview and the, and Westview and Fairview, but those buildings also include more extensive renovations, similar to what happened to Central and Ridge View under previous, uh, bond issues. So it's more than, those four schools, it's more than just an administrative suite at the front door for building security. It's a complete building renovation and upgrade. Basically, those four schools have a budget pretty close to the budget for the other 16.
And I forget how many of these did Hollison Miller originally design? The 20?
Well, going back to the 70s, which would have been of the 16, probably all of them. John Suther, the partner in charge at Hollison Miller, probably goes back to, he's, he's not that old, I'm not going to embarrass him, but tell him how old he is, but he probably goes back to, uh, Pleasant Ridge, Mahaffey era, definitely half of the schools on that list he personally worked on. You ask why Hollison Miller? To say why Hollison Miller, you know, not to, not to say anything bad about the other architects that submitted, Hollison Miller has a lot of experience with our buildings, with these buildings they're going to be adding on to. They have a lot of experience with the city of Olathe. We're going to have to get building permits for all 20 of those projects. They have a very close working relationship with code officials and zoning officials within the city, been very successful, worked on projects for the city. Uh, they have a very strong staff, they're one of the largest architectural firms in this area. They're able to put people on the project that have worked on projects for this school district before. And then probably the biggest reason we'd recommend them is they have the lowest fee proposal on top of all of that. So with all of the good things that were going for them anyway, their fee proposal was the lowest fee proposal.
There was a lot more to justify it than just the low fee, but that's a, that's a convenience.
I think there was plenty more to justify it, but the low fee made it a lot simpler.
Thank you.
Greg has talked about the timing of these projects as well in terms of some starting over Christmas break or utilizing spring breaks and various times that, that are, are going to be really, uh, difficult timing and to have a, a firm that, uh, we know very well and communicate with, uh, very well, it's going to be an asset to us.
I'd move to accept the fee proposal from Hollison Miller Architects for both requests for proposals in the amount of $905,375.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Mr. Parker for approval of the architectural engineering proposal for elementary school renovations. Ms. Felter? Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And again, many thanks to the members of the board who also take the additional time to serve on that construction committee and keep the rest of us, um, in the know. I appreciate your efforts very much. Alright, we are moving on now to other action items. The first one is 8.01, approval of a professional council, council policy revision and negotiated agreement.
And just to clarify, this is, uh, would be some pieces of that that we're bringing forward to you tonight so that we can get the school year started. We have not at this point, um, uh, settled into a new negotiated agreement with our teachers association, so that full document will come at a later time, but there's, there are some policy changes, um, that were agreed to, uh, as we went through this past school year in preparation for the coming school year.
I move to approve policy changes as presented.
Second.
I'm sorry, who second? I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. McCune for approval of policy council, of professional council policy revision negotiated agreement changes. Ms. Felter? Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Item 8.02 is the approval of the 2002, 2013, 2014 budget.
I'd move to adopt the 2013, 2014 budget as presented and authorize the budget for submission to the Kansas State Department of Education and the county clerk for certification.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Ms. Felter for approval of the 2013-14 budget. Ms. Felter? Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Are you breathing a sigh of relief? Okay. Item 8.03, approval of a resolution authorizing and directing issuance, sale and delivery of general obligation school improvement and refunding bonds, series 2013C.
John, in our, uh, financial, uh, consultant, Justin Evey, I think will make some comments.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here again. Actually, very pleased to be here this evening. Had some, uh, nice results to present to the board. Um, as indicated at the last board meeting, um, it was our intent to be in the marketplace. Part of this meeting to secure interest rates for the school district, and that did happen. Um, we actually secured interest rates on Wednesday, um, of last week. Uh, the average interest rate that was secured- The average interest rate that was secured on the bonds, 20-year financing, was 4.08%. And the savings that was achieved by refinancing the 2006 A-bonds was over $700,000. As we look back, I know we've talked about market volatility here at a number of meetings, and unfortunately, none of us have figured out how to necessarily control interest rates. But as we look back at really what's happened over the last 60 days, but really also what's happened historically, I think the one thing that, you know, we'll look at at this point in time, and whether it be a week from now, or six months from now, or five years from now, is that you look at the average rate of a 4%, and although we wish we could finance this six months ago, when rates are at 3%, I think we'll look back at this and these will still be obviously very good rates, given this volatile, given the volatility in the current marketplace. From a processing standpoint, obviously, you know, we had the successful election, followed by kind of the meltdown in the marketplace. I do appreciate, you know, although we don't control rates, we do control process and execution. I do appreciate the attention of staff and the board in the past four or five weeks to get to this point, as from the standpoint of selling bonds, getting the rates locked in, ultimately securing and meeting the objectives of the board, which is obviously to present to the public a no-mill of the increased bond issue. With that, the resolution before we leave this evening essentially ratifies the bond purchase agreement, which was a document that was signed last week, which secured the interest rates on last Wednesday. Fortunately, that, you know, hindsight being what it is now, actually, rates are higher about 10 basis points than what they were last week, so it's certainly a good thing that we moved forward and we were prepared to move forward when we did. But the resolution ratifies the agreement, allows us to move forward towards closing, which is scheduled for August 20th. Glad to answer any questions.
Can you tell us, the board, who purchased most of the bonds?
Yes, I can. When we go out to sell bonds, obviously, there's a number of categories of investors. We have insurance companies, we have money managers, we have trust departments. One of the major purchasers of the bonds was State Farm Insurance.
And I want...
So thank you, Mr. Parker, for doing that.
And I'm going to vote on this, and I want the public to understand, and the reason I ask that question, because Dr. Barry told me that just tonight at the board meeting, that was the first time I heard that. I couldn't give you the name of one person at the bond department, and if you ask them who Harlan Parker was, they wouldn't have a clue. So from that, I would hope that the public would understand that. I don't have a conflict of interest here, and this is such a big issue, and it was all bidding process anyway, that you just didn't say, here, these are yours, they had to bid on them and go through that whole process.
It's a very, it's a very open process, and State Farm's obviously a very large buyer of bonds nationally. They're very active and very involved, and fortunate for this transaction, obviously, with the volatility in the marketplace, really, the insurance companies are one of the primary buyers of bonds in this particular market, and we were very fortunate to have them involved in the transaction.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, just a couple of the other comments. I mean, so again, we, it was a $244 million bond, but we're selling 190 of them, 190 million of them now. And John, maybe you just want to speak to, again, the purpose of that, but then again, Dustin, part of that being is, the other side of this is, again, we don't control interest rates. Interest rates have been going up, and again, six months ago, it would have been nice, but you mentioned that even this week, they've gone up so much. And we had talked about one time, what is that difference of even a 10 basis point jump up? And so it was a savings of being able to get that done last week versus this week and going forward with that.
Yeah, so a couple of things. And obviously, you know, it really was six months ago when we started the bond task force process and really started modeling, and I think John and I spent hours, maybe not days, looking through a number of models that really looked at state aid changes, assess valuation changes, interest rate changes, the assumptions of, do we issue all the bonds at one time because of state aid issues? Do we split it up over a series of bonds over four or five years? So we had modeled all those situations with the intent to make sure that when we came to the bond task force and then ultimately the board, we were confident that we could present to the public and the board a no-mill of the increase type of project. So that was the first objective. Now, going back to February 1st, I don't think anybody, certainly, I did not predict kind of what would happen beginning kind of June 15th. And fortunately, when we do our modeling, obviously, we want to make sure we're very conservative in doing so, to make sure that any types of fluctuations in all those variables, we can still meet what those plan of objectives are. From a, from a market perspective, you're correct. So the markets obviously moved 10 basis. So if we take a short-term picture of what's happened last week, if we had decided, and obviously, John and I had some pretty in-depth conversations last week about, is not, do we push forward now? Do we want to hold back? Here's a market tone. And the conclusion was, we can still meet the objectives, the rates are still within the parameters that we had discussed with the finance committee and the Board of Education. And so it was the intent to move forward and secure those rates on that date. Since that time, obviously, the volatility has still continued in the marketplace. I would say that we're probably 10 basis points higher, which 10 basis points on this transaction is about $2.7 million of annual interest, additional interest expense. And obviously, then also credit spreads are widening, so it's probably a 10-plus basis point move in the last week. From the standpoint of what we're issuing now, obviously, a $244 million project, a number of different modeling scenarios. So what we did now is just, okay, how much can we spend, or what's projected to be spent in three years? And there's a number of various IRS regulations or federal regulations related to bond proceeds and what you can spend in a three-year time period. So we looked at, number one, what number is that? And then, number two, can we lock, can we lock that in, eliminate all future interest rate risk on that portion, to make sure that we can secure the no-mill of the increase? The balance of the bonds, we would not anticipate issuing those bonds until probably 2016, maybe 17, unless there's legislation in future years that would reduce or eliminate stated-on-bond issues. If that would be the case at a future time, we could be able to react and lock that in as well.
So in essence, going back to the $190 million now that we're doing now, two reasons. Number one, John, you felt, at least what I've understood, you feel very comfortable that we'll be able to utilize that money within this three-year period that we have, that we have to actually start utilizing this and spending some of that. That's correct?
You have to spend 85% of it within, you have to make every effort to spend 85% in a 36-month period.
Right.
That was our breaking point of about 190 million.
Okay.
Greg's good, but he can't get that much built.
We can't, we can't use all.
We don't need that elementary school for this quickly, so that's really one of the bigger projects holding off.
Right. Mr. Evey, your point of the market changes that are going on right now, again, if you go back 30 days, the rates were much lower. There's some volatility going on, and it's, but it's going up significantly. So again, to move this and do 190 now makes a lot of sense, because again, while we can't predict what's going on, we can go back and look at the last three, six months, and we're going to see that that rates are continuing to go up. And every 10 basis points is $2.7 million that's costing us. So again, it makes a lot of sense to be able to, number one, we could utilize the money right now, and we can get things moving. And secondly, it makes a lot of sense, because every time that moves up 10 basis points, that's costing us additional money. So it makes a lot of sense to do all of this at this time.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Just two more quick recognitions. Again, I thank the Board of Education for your willingness, obviously, to refund, and our community needs to know that, we, as part of this transaction, the savings of over $700,000. And then, secondly, while he's standing here, I just want to recognize Dustin Evey and Piper Jaffray, he's been tremendous to work with, very flexible, very responsive to our needs, just, it happens so quickly that he can get information back to us. And it's just icing on the cake that he's a parent in our district of four kids, so...
No more. It's on tape, yeah, we're good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
If there are no additional comments or questions, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. Well, I move...
Go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation school improvement and refunding bonds, Series 213-C, 2013-C, of the Unified School District, number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, Olathe, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal love and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain and other documents and actions connected therewith.
Second.
I have a lengthy motion by Mr. Shear, seconded by Mr. Poland, for approval of resolution authorizing and directing issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation school improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2013-C.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
But I'd also just like to make a quick comment, too. Thanks, Mr. Hutchinson and Dustin. Being on the finance committee, dealing with all this bond and how this market works and everything else, they have been a great help of educating us and keeping us informed and spending time with us to make sure that we understand what's going on, and they are doing a wonderful job. So thank both of you guys.
And I'll second that.
And having left the finance committee, I will second it as well, or third it. All right. Okay. Moving on to 8.04, Approval of the 2013-14 Board of Education Committee Assignments.
Are we doing both at the same time?
It's okay with me, is it okay with you all?
I would move to approve Board of Education 2013-14 Committee Assignments as presented, and also to approve Board of Education 2013-2014 School Site Council Assignments as presented, 804 and 805.
Second.
All right. A motion by Mr. Parker and seconded by Mr. McKeon for approval of the 2013-14 Board of Education Committee Assignments and Board of Education School Site Council Assignments. Ms. Hips?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
And thanks to all of you for getting your preferences back to me quickly so we could get that done. I appreciate it. Okay, we're on to future action items. We're just a little bit behind schedule. Those are items for which we have received written information, and we will be entertaining decisions on at a later time. Are there any questions or comments Board members would like to make at this time? Mr. Poland, I can see you're ready to go, but you have five minutes this time.
Okay, I'll have to take two minutes.
Okay.
9.05, Mr. Thomason, could you just explain to the board why, how you will be presenting this? Will it be 16 schools and four schools split apart with the construction management to offer, to do all of them, half of them, or I mean, 16 of them, four of them, and what your reasoning will be for the RFP?
Right now, the RFP is worded in such a way that we're looking for a construction manager for all 20 projects, one firm. There are at least three or four in this area that are able to do that. The reason we're doing it that way is for efficiency. Once again, many of these are same solutions at different locations. Right now, we're working with a construction manager who has seven projects active with us right now. Their ability to be efficient in moving personnel from project to project, in resolving problems, how would I put it? When you answer a question for one project, you get, you've now answered the project, the question for multiple projects, and it adds to the efficiency. So right now, that's how we are assembled, and that's how we'll be presenting it.
And is there any incentive or penalty for them not having, performing on time?
We use a process, construction management is agent, they're really an agent of ours, they're not at risk, there is no penalty for them not being complete, other than they're not on our list and won't do work again, I would hope. I would hope that we'd have your support in that. All of the firms on our list, not everyone who asked to be a construction manager for the school district is on the approved list. The construction committee and the board have placed people on that list that we think have the ability and the desire to complete projects on time.
Thank you.
Questions about any other of the items, future action items, or comments? All right. Then we are ready for topics for discussion by Board members. I didn't receive anything ahead of time, but if there's something, oh, all right, you got two minutes.
Thank you. I just thought of one this evening, and I really appreciated the presentation that we had about all the work that went on in the school district this summer, but I would also think that we would be remiss if we didn't give a shout-out to the staff at over at Olathe Area Technical Center. They worked, all of the staff, and I think Mr. Thomason would agree with this, they worked all summer long to get everything moved from the previous building over to the new building. I see a lot of head nodding out there. And so, and I know there's another school district not too far from here that always hires professional firms to move, and when they move to their last building, they spend $500,000 moving into the building, that was told me by a board member, and we didn't spend near that to move, to equip this center. And so our staff worked hard, the teachers worked hard, our staff worked hard. So I would like to make sure that next board meeting, then we'd have a shout-out for our Olathe Area Technical Center staff for all the work that they did this summer, off the clock. Thank you.
Dr. Barry, are you going to mention anything about the Field of Dreams?
Go ahead, yeah, please go ahead.
Just not talk to discussion, but just for those of you that were able to participate in the Field of Dreams, what a tremendous, you know, achievement by our community. Dr. Dugan was very, very involved in it. This involved the Olathe School District, the Olathe Medical Center, the Kansas City Royals, who else?
The city.
The city, I'm sorry, the city.
Merely disappointed if you forgot the city.
But for those of you not familiar with it, it's basically a field, what's the description of the field? Access-ready or whatever.
Accessible.
Accessible. It's going to be out of Olathe Northwest, just a tremendous, Eric Hughes was the driving force from the city, from Olathe Community, longtime Olathe resident. So it just, you know, just a lot of wonderful things to be, you know, if you haven't seen anything about it, I'm sure it's on the, is it on the website, information about it, Dr. Dugan?
No, I don't think it was linked up yet.
But, you know, I encourage you to investigate it, and because it's just quite an accomplishment for the, for the community. We happen, it happens to be our land, but it's an accomplishment for the community. And I just want to, want to make sure that everybody that was involved with it gets recognized or at least feels proud of themselves, because it's quite an accomplishment, so...
And it's been a lot of hard work over a several-year period of time, so thank you. Other comments? Dr. Barry, you're on.
Thank you. I do have a number of comments, and I'll get through those pretty quick if I can, but we are eight workdays away now from students returning, and we get excited about that. We've had reports, because all schools have gone through enrollment and registration, we've had reports of new families, new kids, obviously. That's balanced right now by the fact that all schools, I think, have students from last year that have not yet walked in to re-enroll. That happens every year. We don't see some of them until closer to school time. But anyway, we'll be anxious to see what the count is. Reminder again, as you know, that September 20th is our official count, so from the first day of school that we start to count, it'll fluctuate a lot up and down until we hit that official count day. I always try to be a safe driver, but I have to admit, when I'm going north on Black Bob and I hit 127th Street, I quickly turn my head to see what the road looks like. But more than that, we are getting updates through Tom Willis and John Hutchinson from the city and from the work crew in terms of what's happening. Anxiously waiting, we've been told again that it will be finished to the front part of Olathe East, so that we can get kids in the front drive by the start of school. They are working now, seven days a week, and so that will continue. Rain, obviously, is going to set that back, and I know it's calling for some more rain tomorrow, so we'll see what happens. We have received word from the city, they are going to provide us temporary crossing guards at that area, and also, they have provided us a map with alternate sidewalk routes in terms of ways kids can walk to school if they're walking to Pioneer Trail. But the very positive thing is that there will be cross guards there to help kids cross that busy corner at the start of school and for a little bit of time. Our schools, I can report, are already alive with kids. I was at Olathe Northwest this morning. Leadership camp was finishing up. They've had band camp, they've had debate camp, and that's happening at all of our schools. Kids are already coming and getting involved in those activities. In terms of budget, I want to take just a second to thank John and his staff and business and finance for putting the budget work together, and they always make the, send it off to Peek and get the blessing from Dale and so forth, so we know that's all good. This is the third year in a row that the mill levy has had a slight decline. And so again, in these really tough economic times, we're proud of that, also knowing, and we share out, that at the same time, we've tried to maximize the budget and get everything that we could, and we've done that again this year, except for some capital outlay that we didn't maximize that levy, but we feel good because of the age facility money that was in our bond issue. We welcome new educators tomorrow. The number that we shared with you was 159, but if you'll look at the HR report tonight, we had a couple more resignations, one that has decided to stay home and one, the family is relocating to Oklahoma, so we have two more that we will add to that. But the new educators report tomorrow morning and begin a very detailed, very strong orientation program to teaching in the Olathe School District, and we're very proud to have a program like that. Want to give you a quick update on the Mill Creek project that we talked about last month, just so you know what's coming. As you know, we tabled that and put it off to our next meeting, which will be September 5th. We, right now, and it was true, that we couldn't get an appraisal for tonight anyway, so that appraisal will be coming for September. We have staff on our side in the district working in terms of what potential uses of that building would look like and what the cost to improve that building would be, so that you can balance that with the offer that will again be presented at the September 5th meeting. Want to also give you a little update about future presentations, just so you know, and I'll get these scheduled so you know exactly what month they're coming. And again, we'll try to make sure that we have something come with all information one month before it's acted on the next month. Some of these items are things that take place in the natural timing and the work of a school board and school district. Others are items that you have requested, and so I want to make sure, again, that if there is something that you would like to know more information about, and we think it could be a presentation, let me know. We will have a presentation on student achievement from last spring, and what it looks like now. Instead of AYP, it's AMO, the Annual Measurable Objectives by the state. We're going to have, and we owe you a report on risk management, and that's going to be a lot of different pieces, but how the district approaches that. You will get an update on the school safety task force that we were a part of in that study. The piece that's happening right now, the chief of police of Olathe has reached out to us, and they are going through those recommendations on their side, and then they want to get together with us and talk more through that before we would come to you and share out. We're going to make a presentation and come back to you on food nutrition changes and update what's happening there, a little bit more detail about the appraisal process and information in our district, and finally, some information about a piece that came out of the legislature in terms of innovative schools and that application process, what it looks like. So a number of programs or presentations will be coming your way. And then finally, tonight, I would like to ask for consideration of a study session or a retreat on that third Thursday that we sometimes reserve in September. This would be September 19th, a Thursday night, again, a time when we can get together without any action, being proposed, just discussion from about 6:00 to 9:00, and might even ask that we take a look and do something like the city of Olathe does, and have it away from this setting and a time where we could be together and talk.
Mr. McCune, I won't be in Hawaii.
Is that a date that everyone can work with? I can make that date.
I'll be there.
Hang on.
All right. This would be amazing if we could get consensus on first try. Mr. Parker's still checking?
Yeah.
He's good?
6 o'clock.
Yes.
6 o'clock. We'll give you more details.
Okay.
I'm good.
We're coming to your house, Rick?
You can come to my house.
Okay.
Sydney has piano lessons, though, so she'll be the entertainment.
And the dogs will greet us at the door.
Absolutely.
I got to tell one quick story on our newest board member, Brent McCune, getting used to the emails and so forth, but he sent me his first email, it's been a little while, but he signs his emails with his three initials, and so it said BAM. And when I first read it, it was a statement, and then it said BAM, like, chef that says that or something? I thought it was kind of a, he was pleased that he sent me his first email, but I just realized that was his three initials.
I've always added my middle initial.
I was going to say, I bet you have. All right, we still have, I need to... Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I would suggest that unless we find someplace that doesn't cost the district any money, that we have it here.
Certainly, we can do that, but...
And then the other thing on your comments about the mill levy, you know, you sort